Okay, good morning. Our call this morning is meeting the order. The first thing is the and is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request that item number eight be pulled from the agenda and we take it up at Personnel Issues Committee. And I would make a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to approve the agenda minus item number eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any citizens to be heard? That's not on the agenda. I have for items that are not on the agenda. Anybody on the computer?
Mr. Chair, I did have a conversation with the citizen last week, and she had talked about potentially coming this morning, but I do not see her here this morning.
Okay, well, we want to approve the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, to approve the payment of bills and vouchers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from August the 1st.
Mr. Chair, move for approval, the minutes of August 1st.
Second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion. And a second to approve the minutes from August the 1st. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our first item on the agenda is the state auditor, Julie Blah.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I believe that, just was out talking with Lori Johnson, and as of right now, she is not out there. So I don't know if we want to jump to our.
Okay, we'll just hold that one for a while. Okay, budget presentation from Lakes and Prairie. We got Colleen and Lori.
And Robin.
Robin, Robin and Lori. Okay. Give us your budget presentation, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us this morning. My bad, sorry. Thank you. Good morning, thank you for having us this morning. I'm Robin Christensen. I'm the Economic Empowerment Director for CAP LP, or Lakes and Prairies Community Action.
And I'm Lori Schwartz, and we're here today just to talk about our annual budget presentation. And so it's kind of a little bit different this year where we have two different requests, I guess. One that has historically been a request for support for a position that we have called the Senior Coordinator. So we are respectfully requesting $56,134 for that position. That person specifically works with older adults, one-on-one throughout Clay County, doing a variety of things such as helping with information and assistance, doing applications for basic needs, making sure those monthly needs are met, low-income individuals, trying to make sure that they're on public benefits or programs and services that could help stretch those food dollars and make sure that those flexible funding is available for them, whether that's needed or not. That person also helps administer commodity food box program and organizes volunteers that deliver 150 to 160 food boxes each month for, throughout Clay County. She worked on completing renters' rebates and property tax refunds, which are super timely because those are kind of going out right now as we speak. And almost $80,000 in refunds were completed this year for those. She works collaboratively with other agencies serving older adults, attends senior meetings each month in each community, and then obviously works one-on-one with older adults for various needs. And so far this year, she's worked with over 283 older adults within Clay County. So new this year with that is we are partnering with Heart Core, which is through the American Heart Association. It's similar to like what you would think of as AmeriCorps or Peace Corps, but it's specific to, they're looking for somebody to focus on rural cardiovascular health, hypertension, nutrition security, and tobacco cessation. And we just feel like this is a good partnership with us, considering the work that we do with older adults in rural Clay County. So we're hopeful that we'll have, be able to have that Heart Core individual within our agency, and that would be for a whole year, starting in September. The second half of this, our annual budget request, I guess, is for our Rural Routes Transportation Program. We've talked to you, I think, a couple of different times, Lori has, I know I have at least once, talked to you about that service that we provide for older adults throughout Clay County. We just feel that this is needed. We, I made a little kind of thing that was, I think it was included in your packet. I had sent it to Jackie earlier last week. So just kind of talks a little bit about the communities that we've been serving with Rural Routes, the average monthly ridership, kind of how important it is and how impactful it is to the people who ride on that bus. And then also just kind of ways we've spent those dollars that you've previously supported us with. And so for that piece, we're kind of asking for $54,075 to support that position as We do have, we did increase fees for that bus, for the Rural Routes bus. We kind of doubled what older adults pay, just to kind of help with expenses, too. That started in May of this year. So now it's anywhere from $10 to $25 per ride. But again, because the individuals that we're serving are low-income, the majority of them are paying the lower end of that, so $10 per ride wherever they're going in Clay Kind of some top destinations that I discovered when I was going through some of our data is, obviously Walmart is our number one place where people want to go, because it kind of gives you the opportunity to get food, household goods, prescription items. But the second is the clinic or the doctor's office, whether that's the VA, Essentia, Sanford, and even mental health providers. So we've been taking people to see a mental health provider if needed. Did you want to add anything, Lori?
Before we go to the, the first position you talked about, is that a new position? Or is that something?
No, that's something that's been requested and historically been funded by the Clay County Commission for quite some time.
That was Raleigh's.
Correct. Dale Raleigh was in it, and then it was actually me for four years, and now it's somebody new. Amanda Gonzalez.
So that position's been in your budget all the time?
Correct.
We funded that one.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that sounds like you were requesting a new position.
Oh, no.
Okay, very good. Gotcha.
I guess I would just add, the Heart Core position is totally paid for out of other funds. It's paid for by the Heart Core Corporation, where they will provide a full-time staff to CAP LP, and that person would work right alongside of the seniors coordinator. So that, that position is, is just explained in the proposal, but we wouldn't need funding for that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess to make sure you, you, I get your answer, question answered, is historically, we've asked for funding for the senior coordinator position, and then this year, we're just asking for additional funding for the Rural Routes Transportation Program, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think last year, wasn't the Rural Routes, didn't that, didn't we do something with that with ARPA funds, or is that?
Correct.
Right? That was previously funded with ARPA funds.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that, that request went, came back again through that, and unfortunately, this year, with the remaining dollars and demands, that one, the ARPA committee did not approve that for just next year. So, so now they're looking for it to come through our normal budget.
Okay.
Correct. So for the senior coordinator, it would be 56,134, and then Rural Routes, 54,075.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Robin, no, no offense when we call it Dale's position, sorry. I mean, that's just how we remember it.
It's okay.
You just did great work there, too, so, as a caveat. You know, we've had a lot of discussion internally about how do we get our best bang for the buck with that rural transportation piece. And the, the difficulty is, looking at the numbers and the cost per ride, we just are concerned a little bit about just how much each ride costs. Now, I will say that in no, in no way are we wanting to eliminate a transportation service to rural residents in Clay County at all. But I think we do have concerns based on what that cost per ride is. And it is difficult because of the pandemic disrupt the service, and there, you know, there was a loss of a beloved driver as well that disrupted the service. And so can, can you talk a little bit about the using of unrestricted funds to cover the expenses through the end of the year? And is there any availability to utilize some of those funds for offsetting what the total is?
Yes, we, we, and we completely understand what you're saying. It has been really challenging to get this program up and running. And of course, we all know the pandemic didn't help. But then again, with the loss of our driver who had been really kind of getting it off the ground, that just stifled everything. So we do, we completely understand. You know, we come here and we kind of feel a little bit like a broken record because we know that you care about rural transportation just as much as we do. We also know that when we haven't been able to really increase ridership, that makes it really difficult. It's just that those that are riding, it's so important to them. So what we do now, the monies that we have requested, the $50,000, that doesn't cover the full amount that it takes to run that service annually. We, I think that we put in with unrestricted funds, for example, like through our Community Services Block Grant, or our Community Action Grant, which is from the state of Minnesota. We, how much, I don't know exactly what we supplement that. Was it right around 25 or 30,000 that, that we're using already to supplement that?
No.
Again, just because it's expensive to run a bus. I think the ultimate frustration for us, and this is just a, just a, you know, a whine on my part, has been with our Live Well at Home Grant that we were funded some years ago, that allowed us to buy this beautiful bus and hire two additional senior staff. And we had services in Clay County for our, our older adults, I think, at an all-time high. And through COVID, we were regularly reporting. Reports were wonderful. They called us and gave us additional funds to run an extra year, which we were so grateful for. And then when it came time to ride again, we didn't get the grant. So we rode again last year, and now we haven't heard anything. We were supposed to hear in July, which the state is really backed up. But we're assuming that, since we haven't heard now August 15th, that we're probably not receiving the Live Well at Home Grant again. So in checking with our neighbors, our Community Action neighbors in, you know, DL, Mahabe, West Central, Elbow Lake, they haven't been getting the Live Well at Home Grant either. And when, when contacting the, the lead person at the state, there's just really no good answer, other than that there's just never enough money to go around. And we, we understand that, too. It was, but it's really difficult when we just had such a good thing going. And then we, we really, you know, we ended up having to lay off our full-time person. And obviously, you're aware of, you know, what it's done for our trans, you know, for the transportation that we're, that we are providing.
I just had one additional follow-up question. In terms of utilizing the bus, I know you do a lot of coordination with rural seniors for food boxes. Is there a way that the bus could be used to deliver to some of those folks that maybe don't have transportation?
So for the commodity program, are you saying?
Just wondering if you utilized the bus for that, if there's funding from that program that you could help offset the.
Yes. We're not, we don't get any funding for actually administering that program. We're just a partner of North Country Food Bank, and that's who, so it's the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, or CFSP, which is called NAPS in Minnesota. Everything has to be an acronym.
Right.
And so we just are a partner of theirs. We don't receive any funding for that. But we have utilized the bus to deliver boxes before, especially like in Holly, when there's, you know, 20 to 25 boxes that are going out to that area.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I kind of want to echo some of the comments of Commissioner Mojo, and I, you know, certainly, rural transit's always been a concern, and it's, it's, I've been on this board for 20 years, and I think it's lacked that entire time. It's just, it's just something. But the dilemma is this, and it's, right now, you know, when I do the math, and we talked a little bit about this in ARPA, but right now, based on, you know, when I look at your 2017 chart, you're averaging about 17 riders a month. And when you put that out there annually, that's like 204 rides annually. And when you divide it in at 54,000, it's a $265 per trip. You know, and then, and then when you add on to that what you just talked about with what you subsidize, in addition to that, that number goes up to $387. That's, I'm just, there has to be a better way.
Right.
Yet when you just, when you just look at the dollars per ride, it, there has to be a better way to, to accomplish what we want to accomplish. I don't have the answer for that, but I'm hoping that somebody can, can help us in that regard. But, but it's just, it's just a really, really expensive deal for, you know, when we're in social services, we have demands of all kinds on, on our tax dollars. And, you know, we have to try to use those monies as, to get the best impact that we can. And I, I don't know that $265 a ride is our best impact in, in funding something. So I'm, I'm just putting that out there. I think, I think that we, you know, we need to go back to the drawing board. I think back to some of the work that's done in some of the other areas where Clay County had a really good, and I don't know, I haven't heard about it for a while now, but they had a really good volunteer driver program that was really, and those drivers still received a stipend.
Yep.
You know, and that, that seemed to work in a lot of cases. But I think we have to really research this better, to find a better way to, to accomplish the goals.
I was saying the same thing. I mean, we get that bus, I mean, it almost turned out to be a burden for us to pay the cost of that, operating that bus. It would be better off getting a vehicle, a smaller vehicle or something like that. But I don't know if the handicapped people need that bus to get wheelchairs on or whatever. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. The majority of the people do get on with the lift, yeah, because they either have a walker or.
Okay.
A wheelchair, you know. Even if they don't necessarily have to, it's safer for them to use the lift.
On, on average day, do you get more than one person on the bus?
Depends on the day. Most of the time, probably one or two, maybe three.
Mr. Chair, just hearing the discussion, but also knowing the residents in which you're serving, I think it might be helpful. Commissioner Krabnoff and I serve on Lakes and Prairies Board. It might be helpful for us to just have a meeting with staff and to just see how we can figure this out. You know, I, the vulnerability of those people, I just don't want to cut something. I, I want to find a solution. And I think having a, a meeting probably is the best way to do that. We have time to do that.
And, and I just really want to say, we 100% appreciate what everybody is saying in this room. And we couldn't, we can't argue the numbers 100%. And again, I think you probably know and, and remember, you know, when we started this, it was started based off of roundtable conversations with seniors in, in Clay County, you know, in Holly, Yule, and Barnesville, where everybody was just gung ho and wanted a ride and needed a ride. And then, you know, for a while, when we had Beth, it was increasing, but, you know, for whatever reason, things slowed, you know, it slowed down. We know why that happened, but then it didn't pick up again, you know. And so the recruitment efforts that have been made this past year, too, have just not been effective. So again, I, you know, I think it's, it's just that, it's just that frustration of not wanting to give this up, but completely understanding that this, this has just not been lucrative for, you know, it doesn't make sense. And, and, but at the same time, we just, we had to ask, and we, one more year, one more year. But again, with all due respect, we, we understand. We really do.
Mr. Chair, I just, I just want to say, you know, I, I cer, we certainly understand the need, and I don't, I don't mean to undermine the, the need, and, but what I'm talking about is when you, when you do the math on the cost, you have to ask yourself, is there a better way?
Right.
And that's what I'm talking about. I, I certainly understand the needs of every one of those people that gets on the bus.
Do you have a full-time bus driver, or is that just a part-time position?
She's a full-time driver, but then she also is a backup for our Head Start bus. So we provide transportation for their Head Start program, so she can do backup for them as well.
So, so some of her salary is paid through Head Start?
Yep.
Okay.
I, I'll add. I, I definitely agree with the, you know, we need to find a solution. I, I agree with Commissioner Mojo. You'd be okay with it?
Sure, absolutely.
We'll just have and see if we can work through a solution.
Absolutely.
Got some further things to present?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for your presentation, and you need to definitely look them over and check them out. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just briefly, while Lori's here, last week, Lakes and Prairies lost a longtime board member. We lost a longtime colleague, Wilking County Commissioner Lyle Haveland, served just in an amazing capacity. And so I didn't want Lori to be here without mentioning the fact that, yes, he served in another county, but really helped Clay County citizens in his time as well. So our sympathies to Lyle's family.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay. Thank you for, Robin and Lori.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go back to item number two. Julie, are you okay? Julie, we're honored to have you here. Give us a presentation on this. I hope Jackie can help you out with that. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Gross and Commissioners. I really appreciate this. And I also appreciate your flexibility. I decided to tour the, the Family Services Building first, because that's so important. And so I know everything going on, on the third floor over there. Great stuff. But I, I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today. What's happening right now is I'm going on a tour around the state. I started, for instance, this, this leg of the tour, I started in International Falls yesterday. So went over to Roseau, working my way back down, going to visit my staff out here, work my way back to the cities. And I'm talking about, about an issue that I think is starting to affect all of us, not just in Minnesota, but across the country. And that is the shortage of public finance staff. Now, I know that you never talk about shortages here of any other staff. But hey, as long as you've got them, let's, let's, let's add this to it. So what we're seeing right, first off, just a reminder, my, my role in the state is the Office of the State Auditor oversees about $60 billion in government activity. We do it with examinations, audits, investigations. By the way, we appreciate the opportunity to do your audit. We also appreciate just how well your staff prepares for that audit and works with our staff. That is huge, especially when you're talking about in times of shortages, when everybody is stressed. It's wonderful to have a group that we can work with so effectively. So again, we greatly appreciate that. We also provide direct support to local government, staff, and officials. We also do analysis. We pull together data and give it back to you with context, so you can make decisions based on facts. But the issue I want to talk about today, again, is a demand that I think we're all feeling, which is the increased public calls for accountability and transparency. And with more money out there, especially because of COVID, it's still being out there. That's a fair call. It's fair that the, that the, the public would be asking for that. We're also seeing increased audits, reporting, all kinds of extra workload due to those extra funds. Those extra funds all come with extra, extra work as well. At the same time, here's the supply problem. About 60% of public finance workers are older than 45 in that oldest segment. However, the youngest segment, only about 20%, are under 35. So we're twice as likely to be older than younger. As someone who's in the older category, I have a lot of people in my category right now. Accounting graduate numbers are declining. We have people leaving the, the profession, partly because of burnout, because of the shortage. Shortages kind of build that. And according to the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, we're at a point of severe shortage with CPAs. But I can tell you, that is, I think, can be expanded to all people in the public sector working in finance. And so we're seeing some results that are troubling across the country. It's not happening in Minnesota at this point. But we've seen, last year, 149 entities, local government entities have no bond rating. Not dropped a bond rating. They didn't have enough financial documents to get a bond rating, so Standard and Poor's would not give them one. And I can see by the looks on your face, you know how devastating that would be. And that's, that's the worst-case scenario, right? We're seeing increased audit costs, private sector. We're seeing significant increases. Now, we're going to see it in the public sector, too. Our increases have been, are slower, but because of labor costs. We're seeing increased calls to our office about difficulties in finding auditors. We had two firms that dropped all their fire relief associations, for instance. We've got two soil and water districts that said, hey, they're going to a $10,000 minimum audit, which would be, which would double our costs. We have a couple dozen charter schools who are calling up, saying, hey, we're trying to find an auditor. We've got townships that can't get anyone to even bid on their agreed-upon procedures, which is smaller than an audit. So we're seeing that this is getting really challenging. We also are hearing a lot about the challenges in filling financial staff at the local level. Now, all of these kind of, kind of, it's basically because these shortages amplify each other. If we don't have enough people in local government, they can't get the information to the auditor. So the auditor takes more time, and then they burn out, you burn out. It just spirals in a lot of ways. We're also seeing some increased challenges in meeting deadlines. We have entities that have never missed deadlines getting slower with us as well. In fact, when I look at audits, most of the, I shouldn't say most, but a significant number of the findings that we see across the state, when I look at the response, and of course, a finding is something that has to be fixed, or a risk area that showed up. Often, in the, in the response from the entity, it's the word vacancy, retirement, transition shows up over and over again. With the transitions, the jobs are challenging. Things can get lost in transition. So what I'm hoping with the, I think, I think you've given me like seven minutes, eight, 10 minutes, that we could solve this issue. In a time of declining supply, how do we make sure the oversight goes where it's needed? So, now, some of the suggestions that we're getting into our office that we want to look at are things like, looking at things like thresholds for audits, timing of audits, and the type of audit you need, and looking and see if those are still reasonable. Now, I don't think anything would change for Clay County. You have federal programs, you're going to have regular audits. But if we can take some of the pressure off of maybe small entities who have a threshold of, say, $230,000 before they need an audit, that's a 10-year-old number. Should that be adjusted for inflation? Can some of these audits be done every other year? Can some be agreed-upon procedures instead of a full financial audit? So we're looking to propose some, some updates that can take pressure off the audit industry across the board. Collaboration, creating support structures when we have turnover. Do we want to look at, make it easier to become an auditor? Now, you know, I think, how can we go back and make auditing sexy again, if it ever was? But it, you know, that, that's one thing. But one thing we can do in the short term is maybe look at going back to an older. This is also a really good time to be good to your financial staff. I think we all know right now that your financial staff, I know, got some real fans in the back here, uh, and, uh, but I can say, uh, I came, I've come into some offices where they don't want me to make eye contact with their staff. They say, I know what you're here for. And I'm like, no, I would never poach anybody. You know, it's, uh, we're all looking for good staff, so let's all be good to our financial people. Uh, so with that, I'm wondering if there are any questions, uh, again, on this topic or any other while I'm here? Or ideas that you all are thinking of? And granted, if they come a little bit later, I want to put this up. Here's a place where anyone can give us thoughts, and it's anybody in the public who's watching as well. The, our outreach is monitored by a number of people, so it's a way to, you have any idea for the OSA, this is a great place to start. I also want to put up my personal stuff too. Uh, this is where you catch me personally, uh, and my, the cellphone that your tax dollars pay for, so use it, uh, on there. But as, I'm hoping you'll wake up three in the morning, you'll come up with a great idea, go ahead and text me, I'll pick it up in the morning, but it, it'll be there. Uh, but if there are any initial thoughts you already have or questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I was just, I was just thinking, you know, you, you mentioned too, a lot of the federal programs, and with the federal programs, they come with audit requirements in certain areas, but one of the things that I, I seem to recall in a lot of the audits that happen is that they're not really full-blown audits, they might take random areas and, and then if those random areas are, you know, uh, what they're supposed to be, you know, they look at that as, as being a, a good, good sample of, of, for example, the county's business. And I don't know if that, you know, and that, that seems, I think that in itself probably does save time, you know, by, by doing that and, and, you know, I, I also come from, my background before this was a township officer, you know, and, and we, we always, we had, I was on that town board for about 10 years, and we had the same person audit, and we were wondering what would we ever do if we didn't have him, because it is difficult at that level. But at the same point in time, those, you know, even those audits, I don't know if they could somehow, uh, go more to a random samples as opposed to a full-blown, uh, audits might be something to, you know, I, typically you can, in an audit system, you can kind of tell, you know, I, you certainly know that, 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 uh, if everything seems clean, uh, what's the point in keep looking?
That's a, I think you're bringing up a great point. Oh, I, before I go on too far, um, Comish- uh, Chair Gross, do you do the formal, uh, you call everybody?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, we're cool with this? Okay, I don't want you to step on your protocols. Uh, but you're, you're, you're correct, I think, you know, no audit checks every single transaction, and that would be extremely expensive, literally costs twice as much what you pay all your, your people now. Um, but the idea of nar- can, can the samples be narrowed even, even further? Uh, because there's a whole set of standards on how you choose a sample, which things you look at, how many, exactly how many things do you pull out of that file cabinet, you know, or, or pull out of that spreadsheet? Um, but the idea of, can that be tightened up? Can it, can it be narrowed further? Are there places where we're doing a lot of examination, but we never get a finding? We're just never getting a finding? Are there places that can be narrowed? I think some discussions with our federal partners and the National, um, Government Accounting Standards Board, I think is in order. In fact, if you ask, if you want to ask any financial staff, or you want to get them to kind of twitch just a little bit, their eye to twitch a bit, just bring up the new lease standards from Gatsby. Yeah. So, so I think, I think you bring up a good point though, is that we can't bring up standards that are just nice. They, they need to be really important, they need to really be tied to a, a risk that ma- that matters, before we start expanding any of that. But I think your idea of, are there any places that can be narrowed further, is, is a, is a fair point. Thank you.
You know, we think very highly of our financial department. You know, uh, I think yearly audits and stuff like that are important, just to, you hear stories every once in a while, yeah, this has been going on for several years, you know, so I think yearly audits are important, you know, and, uh, I think it's easier to do yearly audits than it is to do one every three, two, three years, you know, so.
You know, it's, it's interesting, it takes, it, it might be, and I'm not sure with your financial staff. I can tell you from our staff position, off, we went, for instance, say, we had a higher ed in, in entity that we went to every other year, they were so low-risk, uh, and, uh, it was, they could certainly wait for the data, uh, every other year. Uh, and, uh, because you don't want to wait for your audit to make a decision, right? You shouldn't have, your audit will come too late to make your choices, so you better not need an audit to know where your money is, right? That's, that's a check, but it better not be your primary source. But the idea that, uh, for, on, from an audit perspective, auditing two years or, uh, I, two years I can say for sure, two years, a, a two-year audit can take only a little bit longer than a one-year audit on our end, because you're still pulling, you pull the data, uh, and, again, I can do two, we can do two years at about the same time we do one year. So it can ca- cut time and costs by, uh, you know, upwards of 40% on there. However, you do bring up that issue of, if you're waiting, if someone, I used to be a math teacher, you wait and do all your homework the night before that project's due, you know, and if you wait two years, I can get a little sticky. You better be still keeping up and not waiting and changing your behavior because you have a two-year audit. Fair, absolutely fair.
All right. Lori, you have any comment to make? Okay.
Just a quick question of my name.
Your microphone.
So your, your, my question, uh, your list of options that you had up there? So, I mean, as I looked at the top three, I guess those are the ones that stuck up, uh, to me, talking about a couple things, but in your position, what, what attitude do you?
I would love it, like you, I mean, unlike county commissioners where you snap your fingers and everyone does, does what you say. Uh, I, uh, so I think, especially those top three items, I would need to go to the legislature for these things. These are set by the legislature. One thing, the opportunity I have, being in the executive branch now, if I get, um, a bill together, say in October, it gets through the system a little quicker, so it's at least put in front of legislators. There seems to be a lot of support for this, and a lot of bipartisan support, as legislators are hearing from their local entities about their struggles. So they're all looking for solutions too. And, and especially, especially, last session, we were able to change the audit thresholds for, um, for, uh, fire relief associations from $500,000 assets under management to move it up to 750,000. Because if 500,000 made sense 12 years ago, 20 years ago, then 750 makes sense now. So we adjusted for inflation, sailed through the legislature. So I think that, uh, if nothing else, we could get a bill, we want to get a bill out there, and if it changes over time, that's fine, that'd be great. We need to get something on the table to start having discussion. I'm also meeting with groups like, uh, the, the, the financial officers groups that work with local governments around the state, uh, meeting with like the small cities, uh, the county associations, other city associations, just, uh, township association, so that we can make sure we're not creating more problems than we solve. Uh, but I think that there seems to be a lot of support for, uh, at least weeding the garden a bit. We've got some overgrowth. Numbers that, that are, that are stuck there, we set them and then forget them, get to be a real problem, where, again, if that number made sense that long ago, you know, we need to either adjust it for inflation or some other metric. As a math teacher, I would love to have magical formulas around all of this stuff, but at least look at them every five years. That should be at minimum. We should get in the habit of doing that.
That certainly is a common sense, uh, thing to do, and, and was at the top of my mind. The, uh, the other, um, because we know the dollars out there are growing too, that are coming, uh, into these places. So I was with Soil and Water for many, many years, and, and the growth of the money since Clean Water Fund that goes into those groups has triggered many of the things they're doing. And, and to the previous discussion, whether it's every year, you know, some people to keep track, but I like how you said two years. Um, and I don't know, uh, you know, I guess it's a matter of, um, supply and demand when it comes to accountants, whether they want to work or not, right? So I don't know how you control that.
I do want to say to every single person listening, if you've ever considered a career in accounting, this is the time to do it. This is, well, and, because you can do, first things, fun things with numbers. It's cool to bring order out of chaos sometimes. If you like to keep things organized, if you do like just the, the feel of numbers, and you want to save the world, you want to go into public accounting. I mean, seriously, the, the, I would say, anything that-
He's laughing.
I know you're laughing, but I, I do believe this. You know, I can't think of one solution that saves the world that doesn't go through a local government entity. You know, we can talk about, um, healthcare all we want, you better talk to your county. You want to talk about the environment, it starts at a city level, a county level. So you literally get to be on the ground floor of actually making, saving the world real. So, um, yes, you're ju- so if anyone at home doesn't appreciate what you're doing, remind them, without you, none of this happens. See, we talk about what happened at the legislature this year, all these great new programs. Well, that wasn't the finish line. That was simply handing the baton to you all, because at this point, it's gonna, it's now in the hands, a, a lot of local governments will be necessary to make any of those projects work. So it truly is, if you help do work in this public sector right now, if, anything you care about is happening here.
If you're trying to make us feel good, you're doing it.
Thank you.
Okay. You have any other, any other comments or questions or?
Well, again, thank you so much. I really appreciate the chance to share this and with the greater public to talk about how do we, how do we meet this head-on? And how do we do some concrete things to take some pressure off the system right now, um, while we do the larger issues of deciding how we want to reorganize the profession? So again, thank you for all the work you do, and I can't wait to meet with you all again.
Got one further question though before you. How many counties are in the state audits? Are, are there a lot of counties?
We're doing about a third, little more than a third of the counties in the state right now, cities of the first class, a lot of, uh, special districts, uh, and so we still have a very good sample of that. Uh, we now have more demand though, in that our rates have stayed flat for the last three years. Now, we've had a new contract go through, they will go up a bit, but our, we're, uh, we're getting a lot of, uh, people who want to come back and have us do their audits. Unfortunately, uh, we're not going to displace any of our current auditees to take on, um, a county that wants to come back. A lot of it's cost. We've now become, um, the, one of the more cost competitive options out there, even for smaller entities now. We always were for larger and mid-sized entities, but now we're cost competitive or lower than even for small entities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, next thing on the agenda is a proposal for intersection analysis on, uh, CASA 12 and Highway 52, Justin?
Yes, good morning. So about a month ago, um, Minda State Patrol Sheriff's Office towards zero death in the Highway Department met regarding the intersection on CASA 12 and 52. If you've ever driven it, it is a nasty intersection with a skew of 52. So there was a good discussion on it, there has been a lot of accidents at this intersection, and the group felt as though this would make a good application for HCP funding. So HCP is Highway Safety Improvement Program, and it is a grant through State Aid. Um, so I do have a proposal today from Bolton and Mink to look at, to look at the application and then also look at different alternatives for the intersection and kind of see what we can and can't do at that intersection.
Would the grant pay for the analysis and the work, or just for the analysis?
Just for the work. So the analysis, uh, the analysis, and I did notice in the packet, the proposal didn't get in there. Um, the proposal's for 27,000, and they will also do the HCP application on behalf of the county. Um, so HCP is capped at 400,000. So if we were to get a grant, potentially depending on what we look at doing, we could get an additional $400,000 for construction costs.
Okay.
And I do, I do have enough in my budget to cover the 27,000 out of my engineering consultant line item.
Okay, but you say you got enough in the budget. Is that covered by the grant then, the 27,000 or?
No, grant is just construction.
Okay, very good.
And that's not guaranteed it'd be an application trying to get additional funding.
Right now, you're just looking like getting money for the grant, for the ground?
No, I'm-
Analysis.
For the analysis, correct.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair, uh, certainly, I think looking at this intersection is, is warranted. I probably have the most calls on this particular intersection in regards to either accidents that had happened or were narrowly avoided. Uh, the angle at which 12 and 52 intersect is wonky.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I, and I think the railroad being there too adds an interesting dynamic. So certainly, um, working on this is, is something we should do. I will make a motion to approve the proposal from Bolton and Mink.
Well, second, me and I grew up half-mile from that intersection.
Never blew through that intersection.
Okay, we've got a motion to second to approve the 27,000 to do the analysis. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, now we'll move on to the Adoption Resolution 2023-18, approving JPA with the State of Minnesota Department of Public Safety.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thanks for having us here this morning. Um, this is just a standard JPA resolution, uh, with the State of Minnesota. What this is, is, um, just an agreement with us and the state to house our DMT breath testing machine, um, in our correctional center, and also to have a main point of contact for the state to get ahold of somebody ha- if that machine is down, if it's lost connectivity, um, if it needs to go in for maintenance, things of that nature. Cost associated with this is very minimal, like, we're responsible for the mouthpieces, and buy about 500 mouthpieces for $196. If, uh, the machine does need to go in for maintenance, generally we are able to get that over to, uh, the State Patrol District Office in Detroit Lakes, and then the state troopers will run it, uh, down to the BCA in St. Paul. They will also give us a, a loaner machine that they have there as well.
Is there a cost for this?
There is no cost for this, no. The, uh, State of Minnesota BCA, they up, they update the machine, uh, they pay for the maintenance of it and things like, things of that nature. Uh, the only cost associated to us would be for the mouthpieces of roughly $196.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, uh, it states in the memo that this has been reviewed by our attorney's office, so with that, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-18.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion to second to approve a resolution 2023-18. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Gabe, I guess, you're next with, uh, looks like you want to buy a drone or something like that.
Yes, good morning, thanks for allowing me to be here. Uh, I am looking at upgrading our drone, uh, we do operate our drone through, or, the Morad Fire Department is who operates, uh, the county drone. Um, we have seen an increased usage in it, uh, this year compared to years in the past, and the, the current drone we have, the technology is, uh, soon to be, um, it's outdated, soon to be unsupported, and they're having some issues with very limited flight times on that. So I do have, uh, $15,699 available in internal service, uh, for, uh, the purchase or, of a drone. And, uh, the quote I got from Frontier, um, Precision is $14,066.99 for the model we've been looking at. And I did check with a couple of other, um, drone retailers, uh, DJI, the company that makes the drone, they set the price, so, um, the quote would be the same, uh, from the other, other manufacturer, or the other dealers I checked with.
I think we've really seen how much those drones are-
We do operate our drone through, or the Morehead Fire Department is who operates the county drone. We have seen an increased usage in it this year compared to years in the past. And the current drone we have, the technology is soon to be, it's outdated, soon to be unsupported, and they're having some issues with very limited flight times on that. So I do have $15,699 available in internal service for the purchase of a drone. And the quote I got from Frontier Precision is $14,066.99 for the model we've been looking at. And I did check with a couple of other drone retailers. DJI, the company that makes the drone, they set the price, so the quote would be the same from the other, other manufacturer, or the other dealers I checked with.
I think we've really seen how much those drones are improving the news coverage and stuff like that, or the coverage for the sheriff's department, whether it's a missing person or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, we've had several instances this year where we've called it out for missing persons. And this new one, the old one has a thermal camera, this new one does have a thermal camera, the technology has improved on that. And then this one also has a search light and a loudspeaker, so you can make announcements so someone could hear you. So if you maybe located someone in like a cornfield or something like that, you could actually direct them out.
How many persons will it carry? Excuse me, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gabe, are we anticipating to keep the old one as a backup?
So the old one, we would hold on to it for now. There's really no resale value in it, just because it's outdated technology. So we would keep it as a spare, but right now, the last time they used it, actually a couple of weeks ago, there was a call-out, and the flight time was down to about eight minutes. The battery life is just not there anymore.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Mr. Chair. Yes. Gabe, how many calls, or do you have that data on how many calls?
Yeah, so the sheriff's office this year has called it out six times, but it's also, and part of the reason why we, we have Morehead Fire man it is, obviously they have, they have staffing and they train with it routinely during their, you know, when they're on shift and stuff like that. But they, they have access to it, so they've used it themselves for different things they have going on through the fire department and through the city of Morehead. So it's really been a nice, nice relationship. So we've used it six times for what we, you know, deem like a public emergency out in the county, but Morehead has utilized it much more than that also.
Just, this is, again, harking back to my former spot in the world. We didn't have them. I grew up in a department with helicopters and the flare equipment on it, and we had to give them up because they were too expensive to maintain. But this is just a cost-effective item that gives you roughly the same advantages of something that runs you millions of dollars a year in maintaining helicopters or fixed wing. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second. Any further discussion? I would think something, if it's just one-time use of this thing, it's, you can get your money back on that already. So, okay, any, any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now, request approval of change order number two with withdrawal management. This is one of many requests coming up, probably.
Hopefully not, Mr. Chair, but-
Okay. I'll go with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. As you mentioned, we have change order number two in front of you. There, there are roughly seven items here, both a couple of small credits and then five additional costs. If you take a look at PR number two, essentially has to do with the foundation and the brick veneer and the shifting that they did there, which resulted in the savings of $1,020. PR number three is kind of our, our big item here on the agenda, is the Department of Labor reviewed our plans. Initially, their, the, the smoke walls were only in the area where our clients are going to be served. When the Department of Labor looked at that, they indicated that it had to be throughout the entire building. And so that added some additional mechanical, electrical changes that needed to take place. Also required a relocation of a, the department plan review also required a moving of our sidewalk due to parking where our ADA parking has to be. So that was $75,255.65. We had a credit as part of the review, unfortunately was much smaller, $431 for, for a showerhead change that required less security. PR number four, because of the, some of the changes that we did, the sidewalk and the parking, there were some additional costs from our landscaping that had to be shifted that, that increased to $737 fee. PR number five is some different value engineering, and Joe probably can go into a little bit more detail in any of these, but specifically these areas of some of the different changes that were, that were made there.
Yeah, there, there was, there were some changes with the mechanical, there, the original design didn't have enough temperature controls and exhaust fans and stuff. So when, when the code review came back, they, they required that we add that to it. So that, it was mainly a lot of that. And then there was some other stuff where we had to change, like the ceiling grid from a plastic to a metal type scenario, and that was another code thing too. So just a few items here that kind of added up to that, that PR five. The other thing is the RFI 16, we had additional solar conduit. We talked about this at the last committee and that, that, you know, we didn't, we chose we didn't want to do it, but then we looked into it and it was a B3 requirement. So that $3,064 there is added to this change order from what we last talked on the last meeting, so.
And then I, the last item, well, the PR five, the total for that was $21,306.76. The RFI 16 was $3,064.42. And then the last item was the supply, supply and installation of the radiant floor heating and-
Yeah, we originally had called out for in-floor heat. What was missed in the package was the insulation that goes in between all the, all the hot water pipes underneath the ground. So that $12,000, that $12,619 is, is part of this. I believe we got committee approval on that one. That's kind of a, I don't want to say a separate one, but it was one that was, was presented in a separate change order, so.
And so that, that does bring the total amount with the new costs and the credits to $111,531.83. This would be coming from our, our original construction contingency, which we've had previously approved, $21,118.31, which will allow us to still have $267,349.86 remaining. I believe yesterday, they poured the cement.
Yep.
And so we're completely out of the ground, and what we know from our past projects is once we get out of the ground, that's usually where the surprise is, at least, end hopefully, so.
Okay.
Sure. We'll go with that.
I'll stick with my pre-use comment. Okay. Any comments or discussion on other motions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go into our budget presentation for public health. Let's see, we got Kathy and Troy, and Troy doesn't look like he wants to come forward, but Carmen with us also.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Carmen, but she's done a great job with, with the counting so far in the public health, and appreciate your work, Carmen.
Jump in anytime. Okay, we, I think in your packets, you have a summary sheet. Our budget, of course, is pretty complicated based on the requirements of where we have to place everything for funding with our grants. So you have a 2024 expense to revenue comparison. It's a one-page sheet. Hopefully you have that.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go, I'll go through, interrupt me please, anytime.
If we get a chance, okay.
I'll go through this. We have the revenue sources at the, at the top of this page, the federal and state grants. Of course, we have many federal and state grants for, based on the requirements of public health. You can see there the information from the 2023 budget, and you can also see our 2024 budget line item. So we have at least two grants that we anticipate there will be an increase, but the state will not provide us, they do not have it ready to provide what the percentage would be for an increase, so we can't predict that on our budget. We will not know potentially till September. So there may be some additional funding that we receive on a couple of grants. The insurance revenue, we bill any programs that we can, we build for our family home visiting program, our adult health program, so we build all of the health plans and straight MA. So we receive that insurance money. You, you can see what that amount is, the 2427 for the 2024 budget. The more staff we have, the more revenue we can produce, because it's based on the number of clients we're seeing. So the more clients we see, we can bill for those. Our license fees, those are really the environmental health program. We bill for all the licenses that we, and in the restaurants and other locations that environmental health serves. So you have the amount that we have budgeted, 469, 669.
Is that license fees going up, or is it because there's more places?
Typically, there might be more places that we have. Our fees, we were looking at that, our community health board really reviews those licensing fees, and we've been looking at whether we need to increase. We really try to stay within the same amount as the state is charging for those counties that don't have a delegated agreement. The state does those inspections, so we really try to stay within that. But there'll be more discussion on that at our community health board, because the license fees, as you well know, or maybe you don't, can't oversee Clay, Otter Tail, and Wilken. There's sanitarians, inspectors in Otter Tail, but he oversees the program. Becker County is not a part of the delegated agreement, their state, the state does all of their inspections. Did that answer your question, Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Thank you. The client fees, those, some of those are with our detox. Also, our Southeast Human Service Organization pays for every client that is a North Dakota client that is housed in our detox facility, and then we have some self-pays occasionally. We also have some, some services in our clinic that may be self-pay as well. Contracts, we do still have two school contracts, DGF and Yulin Hitterdale, where we have a nurse that we place in that school district, so they contract for those services. We have contracts with daycares, our nurses do provide daycare inspections, and so we have those contracts. Of course, we have the social services detox contract, which is in there. We do also drug screens for social services, so those are all contracted, under the contracted area. You see, that's 1,281, 250, so anticipate that'll be up a little bit. We eliminated the miscellaneous area. So our county allocation, you can see that we asked for $1,544 in 2023, and now it's $1,698.80, so an increase for the request. And then the county allocation for ambulance remains the same from '23 to '24. Any questions on the revenue or go into the expenses?
If I can, it applies to both revenues and expenditures. What portion, and at some point in time in 2024, the new facility is going to open up, and what have you incorporated into this? Have you incorporated that being open July 1? Is that what you used as your date for that?
Correct.
And so when you see the payroll expenses being up, that's, that's mostly accounted to that, right?
Yes.
And as well then with the revenues on the top piece, I'm assuming that's the client fees. Are you seeing, did you add dollars for the increased revenues as a result of the facility being open?
Yes.
That's where that goes?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you. Client fees.
Yeah.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Would that also explain the increase in the insurance revenue?
We have, we have some fees that we get from insurance, I mean, our detox program, but not every insurance, every insurance place can, will, will authorize detox. So we have some that do, yes.
But a 41% or almost 42% increase?
Yeah.
Is that the only explanation, or are there other factors that impact on that?
Yeah, that would probably be the only explanation. We do have two contracts with health insurance, so that, they hopefully will be paying for more, and plus with our withdrawal management, we can bill straight MA, and also the MA health, through the health plans.
Okay, thank you.
Carmen, did you have a comment on it all, or is that covered?
No, I was just going to comment that the majority of that was from the withdrawal management that you were, because we're anticipating.
The increased clients will bring in the increased revenue through insurance, through MA.
Yeah, especially the withdrawal management side.
Yeah.
And just to comment on that, withdrawal management is only for Minnesota clients. The North Dakota clients do not qualify under that, so they'll be under our Rural 32 detox program. And again, those come through Southeast, and they pay, they pay for each client and each day. So we have a contract with them as well. And we also have a contract with Fargo VA, so when they send clients over, they'll, they'll pay as well.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so back to your grants, do you have any, I mean, you're, you're showing a decrease there by 12%, but do you have a speculation of what may occur in September, or?
No.
On any flu?
We, we met with MDH, and they will not give us anything, as far as even a percentage. So we don't have anything until they provide that. They're, they have to work with all the counties and divide up that increased funding that was, with legislators that agreed upon the increased funding for a couple of grants. So we don't have a percentage at all.
Okay.
Okay, down to the expenses, payroll expenses, just as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, it's the, you see the increase based on the detox, number of staff that we'll need to add to that building as we're doubling the beds. Communication expenses, that's the phone, cell phones, postage. We expect a little bit decrease, $46,652. Our subscription dues, and that's really our PH documentation system, that we enter all of our clients, et cetera, and so that's a fee that we have to pay. That may go up as we increase the PH doc usage. Marketing and advertising, you know, that's for physicians. We just haven't had great success with what we've been using right now. We're still down a number of nurses. So we decreased that amount. Our typical marketing that we've used and that HR's helped us with, just hasn't been, we haven't been able to recruit, so we reduced that amount. Other professional services, that is just any of the contracted, our labs that we have in our, for our lab usage, we have a CLIA fee that we have to pay in our public health lab and in detox. Our language line, those kinds of things are in, in that area for other professional fees. We've anticipated a little bit of decrease in that. Our medical consultant, we put a decrease in there. We are now in some conversations about changing the medical consultant. The current medical consultant is, is increasing his administrative work, and so they've approached us to talk about another medical consultant within the same system. So we're working with that organization to get another medical consultant. We need one for public health, we also need one for detox. And typically, one medical consultant has covering all those areas. So we're, we're in conversations about that. That change hasn't been made yet, but the current medical consultant will cover until we, we finish those negotiations. Repair and maintenance, that's building, equipment, auto, that's about the same. Travel expenses, training and travel, we put a little bit less. You know, there's, there's a few more remote meetings, so that, that allows us to not- have so much travel, which is helpful when we have to travel to the cities and back. So a little bit less on that. Rent expenses, we can blame Joe for that. Oh, he's not even here. That's the rent we pay for our, obviously for all of our space in the family service center. Insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, that's kind of what we've decided, sixty nine thousand. We figured out that would be client care is detox, the food services that we have for, for detox. So not sure how some of those expenses will play out. The client care is just all the items that we need to serve those clients, but the contract with the food service will be working on that. Supplies and equipment, office and IT, that's pretty close to the same. Immunizations, this year we have to pay for the COVID vaccine. Previously, we got it free through the state, but now if we're going to provide COVID vaccine, we need to purchase that. So we also have vaccine for children and adults. So all of the immunizations, some of that is private pay that we have to have stocked. So that's where the ten thousand three fifty, because we anticipate having to purchase some COVID vaccine. The community health board expenses, that's our four county community health board, so we have some of those expenses in there that may go up. Ambulance appropriations is the same and our grants and subsidies. So we are the fiscal host for the community health board. There's multiple grants that come through the community health board, and then we allocate those out to the four counties. So that's the allocation of those grants and subsidies. So again, you see the total at the bottom in our request for levy, which includes the ambulance, the one million seven twenty eight.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you. And my questions might even be directed more towards Steve and Lori, just for, so when, Steve, when, when we were presented the full budget last year, if I'm not mistaken, my memory, and it sometimes is short, but it seems to me that at that time, we showed a new request increase for public health of about seven hundred and forty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it would have been in that, yeah.
And, and at that time, I had asked the question, and at that point in time, there were no additional revenues calculated in yet based on, on the, what we had anticipate once the new facility is open. It, so it, when you say that the, you know, the county levy request for, for 2024 is one million seven twenty eight, that's compared to, I'm assuming, the one million five forty four last year.
Correct.
So even with the new facility open, after you consider new revenues and the new expenditures, the new requests, what we're looking at is, is that an actual increase in the levy of about a hundred and fifty three thousand, if I'm doing my math correctly here.
Correct.
So, so, and that's, that, that would include then those revenues to offset the new, the new hire requests or the new request. And I, Lori, at the time, we didn't have some of, did we have all this revenue included in your presentation? Maybe, maybe you can use Darren's. Yeah, can you use Darren's mic?
Just be aware that there's an additional, I think about four hundred and fifty five thousand in the social service budget above and beyond this. So, and that amount would be, I believe it's, it's either in the client fees or the contract amount. So there's another four hundred and fifty five, but it's included with the social service budget for, for the detox.
And that's an expense line item?
Yes, correct.
Okay. But in the, in the public health budget, I think we had shown seven hundred and forty five thousand in new requests, I think. It fell in that line item. But we did not have, at that point, I was told we did not have the anticipated new revenues in there yet.
That, that's correct. At the time when we discussed it last year, we were in the, in the process of developing, or excuse me, earlier, developing what the, what the staffing plan was going to be. Troy has worked on that. I, I think just a clarification too is, again, this is operations for six months within, within the request. And also for next year, there may be a small principal payment or interest payment, but that doesn't include a principal or interest payment within this. That'll show up in the 2025 budget.
But Stephen, I guess my, my question goes to when, when, when you and Lori presented the overall early total budget presentation.
We didn't have the information from, from.
We, well, we had the, I think we had the expenditures in there, but we didn't have some of the new anticipated revenues, if I, if I recall that conversation.
That is correct, yeah.
So, so these, like the, going to Commissioner Eberner's discussion about the increased revenues through insurance and, and then of course through the contracts, you know, there's four hundred and some thousand in addition contracts, those, those items were not in the preliminary budget you proposed, those revenues?
The additional social service piece was, for sure.
I think that the contracts of the social, southeast has been, has been a contract that we've had for years where we weren't clear on what the impact of the withdrawal management piece would have been. And that's where I think we were seeing the additional increase. And yeah, as Troy sat down and evaluated, that is the portion that we didn't have potentially earlier, so, or the full amount. We had some, but we didn't, we have a better idea of where that figure is going to be now.
Because the net result is, is between the new costs and the, and the, and the new revenues, the net result is the hundred and fifty three thousand.
That's correct.
And we had the full expenditures in there before, but not the revenue, so.
Right.
I'm hoping that there's probably about a five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's not accounted for in revenues. We'll see. I'm just asking, you know.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioner.
Like the auditor said earlier, we need more accountants.
We can certainly, because there is a lot of detail with withdrawal management and detox. So we're happy to have just a discussion about all of that at a future date.
I have a question on the, the cost of the building. Is that included in your budget? Is that a part of the bonds or what?
The, the cost of insurances and maintenance, that is part of this budget and part of the public health budget at this time.
But going, so, so the, the bond, well, actually, on, we, did we, we didn't even, we didn't.
We're hoping not to.
There's no bond payment?
There's no bond on this.
We'll have to account for an interest payment.
Right.
We didn't issue any bonds.
Right.
So there, I mean, unless we have to, then there wouldn't be any.
Because this, this facility was paid for through state grants and ARPA, pretty much paid for it. So there is no bond payment that has to come out of the annual budget.
Okay, but the insurance and stuff of that is on, on there?
Yes.
Yes.
And you mentioned some upcoming interest. Some upcoming interest?
There wouldn't be any interest because we didn't issue any bonds.
Oh, I.
I think when we, when we've talked about the project, you know, we identified that potentially with some of the increased costs, that there might be, there could be the potential of a funding gap. And so that, the, the initial ARPA opioid dollars, we're hopeful that that will, will cover it. But we did talk about in the event with our DMV project, that if there was a gap there that, that we could potentially sign on for that. But yes, at this point, there isn't a bond.
So we have another page where we break it down in our areas of responsibility. Do you like me to go through that as well? That's the twenty three, twenty four budget comparison. And that has all of the, okay. So we, the, the areas of responsibility that we break it down into, we have administration costs. So you can see they're fairly close to twenty three, both revenue and expenditures. And our MDH infrastructure grant, which is an in and out, that's an additional funding grant that we received to cover some of the infrastructure costs. Immunizations, flu, and DPNC is disease prevention and control and required to follow up on any contagious disease or any diseases that are occurring in the community. One of those specifically is tuberculosis. So we follow up on any, anyone that has the tuberculosis disease, providing medication to them, et cetera. So in the immunizations, there's a cost there. And again, I mentioned, we will have to purchase the COVID vaccine. We also purchase the flu vaccine. So those are, are things that are underneath this area.
Are we still giving a lot of COVID shots?
We, they will continue to provide, they'll continue to do annual COVID vaccines, so we'll see additional. They are not, it's not going to be part of the flu vaccine, which was the hope that maybe they could do one vaccine with both of those. And maybe at some point they will. At this point, it's two separate vaccines. So they'll come out with more information on who would need those and the priorities of that COVID vaccine. But yes, we'll still provide COVID vaccine. COVID is here. We're still having people with, that are getting COVID, and we have a little uptick now with people that are getting COVID. So, so we'll still be providing vaccine for that. The second area is our emergency preparedness, EMS and COVID. We have an implementation, I'll go back to. So the emergency preparedness, as we get paid both from the federal and state government to meet that requirement. EMS is ambulance and CPR. The ambulance, we don't have funding through public health that covers ambulance, that's a county expense. Lots and lots of years ago, that was covered in the public health budget, is no longer, but we keep that in there and work with Steve on the ambulance request. And then CPR, we have a person that provides CPR to any departments that need renewal. We are required to have that every two years, all the nurses. And then detox is required to have the CPR as well. So we have someone trained internally that can provide that CPR training.
Can I, can I go to that line item really quickly? In regards to the allocation for the ambulance, you know, that's, that's remained steady at that same amount for a long time. Is there any internal discussion about adjustments? I mean, I, we've seen, just with Lakes and Prairies, what the fuel budget is doing to those.
Commissioner Mojo and, and Steve, you usually get the request, is that correct? Where they give you the data for the ambulance?
So the portion that, my, the portion that, that comes to me is the Barnesville ambulance service, and that, that's been adjusted, I think we've heard presentations for that over the years, but that's my portion.
And it's Barnesville only?
Barnesville.
Gotcha, thanks.
Yeah, and that's, that's the only ambulance services that is in there.
And that has gone up.
Yeah, that has gone up over the last three years.
Yeah.
A fair amount.
Doesn't Holly have an ambulance too, or is that on a different program?
It's on a different program, more emergency response, not necessarily ambulance. We have a number of services throughout the county that provide services like that.
And the, and the COVID nineteen, that's two funding sources that we had last year and then, and carries over into this year. So it's an implementation and a workforce funding. So that continues through 2024. Our environmental health, food pool and lodging, all of the license and inspections are on, go through our environmental health. And you can see what we get for license fees, covers the inspections of those lodging restaurants and pools. On-site sewage treatment systems and the demolition is also something that Kent provides, and that's a county expense. So those are, those are listed here as well. And that is based on how many septic systems he's dealing with.
That demolition landfill, there is only one, isn't there?
That's correct.
And that costs eleven thousand to do that?
I'm not sure of all the details. Do you know, Carmen, if the details on that inspection?
That is pretty much just Kent's time that he allocates on a yearly basis to do those inspections. And then the fees that are taken in from the landfill go against his time.
I guess I was just looking at demolition landfill. I mean, we only have one, isn't there?
Yep, and he inspects that. So his time that goes, that he uses to go out to inspect that is all that that eleven thousand is for him, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is that, is that billed to solid waste?
Pardon me?
The landfill, demolition landfill inspection.
No, it's not.
So who are, who are we paying that to?
We're paying that to Kent.
Kent.
And salaries, so we get some revenue from the landfill to do that inspection.
Okay, that's, so, so you collect from the demolition landfill, the owners? Because that's privately run. Is that, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that's billed to, to them, not through solid waste?
Right, that's right.
Excuse me, that brings up a, you say the demolition is privately run?
Yes.
That's not a Clay County one?
No.
Okay.
That might, that might create some issues in the future, but for right now, it's privately run, yeah.
Thank you.
And then we have our public health nurse clinic, so that's where we provide all the immunizations. We provide lead screening, manteaus for TB, and a number of other things, drug screening, child and teen checkup. We do a number of things in that public health clinic. So expenses are, are certainly always over revenue. The expenses are the nurse that works in that clinic as well as the support staff. Family home visiting, we have evidence-based family home visiting programs. So we have three of those. We bill to third-party reimbursement. And then we also have some, a couple of grants that cover those home visiting programs. We're down three nurses in that program area, so we're hoping to recruit more nurses. The more nurses we have, the more clients we can serve. And our WIC program, that typically is funded through the, through the federal and state funding. This year, you can see that there'll be a new request. Our WIC director is carrying a full load of, of clients and unable to obviously do all of her, her work as the WIC director. So she's asked us to request a point eight position. That would come under the new requests to alleviate her load and so she can get to her duties. School health, I mentioned that, where we provide nurses to those two school districts. And we have contracts with them for that. In 2024, we'll be evaluating those contracts and we'll be requesting a little bit additional funding for that. Our SHIP program, that's a state health-wide improvement program, that's been around for multiple years. And Good Food Guidelines is also another funding source through the state. We have a pretty incredible health promotion program, and that covers all the four counties. So that's, that's again, grant-funded, all of that is grant-funded. Health promotion area, there's numbers of things that are going on in the health promotion area. We're working in the schools and doing a number of other activities in the community. So you can see the, the funding source for the health promotion area, revenue and expenses a little less, a little more revenue based on the salary of that position. And we have just a little bit of funding in health education. That's an in and out. The second page is child and teen checkup outreach. That also is a grant-funded area where we're following up with kids on assistance to make sure they get into their screenings, their physicians, dentists, those kinds of things. So we have staff working within that program area. Some of the counties lost some funding because some clinics took over some of that outreach. We didn't have a large decrease in that because our clinics decided not to, to cover that, that, so the county is, is covering that area. Refugee health, we get some funding through the state if there's any refugees that need some help accessing services or needing some screenings, whatever we can do, public health-wise. whatever we can do, public health-wise, we get the funding and probably a very limited use of that. But we still need a nurse available to do that. Detox withdrawal management, we talked about that. We just put in the revenue expenses to match at this point. Opioid settlement money, we just, that money is part allocated to allow us to interview and hire a full-time person that would take over the opioid work in the community. So that would, that is the funding for that individual with a little bit of administrative costs in there. And the adult health program, those are all the services we provide to all the seniors, trying to keep them in their homes, keep them safe. It's case management. We have a large number of individuals that we serve through all the health plans. The health plans pay for those services. And so it's not a, it's not a skilled home care service that we provide. We provide the case management so we get the services in their home. We work with home care agencies, we work with other agencies so they can be, remain safely in their home and stay out of the nursing home as long as possible to reduce those costs. So a lot of that work, again, we get more revenue, the more nurses we have, and we're down two nurses in that area. So hopefully we can recruit some more. They're all at high caseloads to manage. So we are requesting an additional position as well, a new request in that area. And we, the 20,000 is based on the revenue over the, over the expenditures for that position.
That 20,000 is the net cost to the county?
Right. Any questions on?
Mr. Chair. So Kathy, when you're, when you went through in your first document, you started talking about, for example, I'm focusing on 2024 expenditures related to COVID.
Okay.
And you had, you had mentioned that we now have to start paying for the vaccines. Can you, and maybe you don't have it available today, but could you provide us with what all you're including in your 2024 budget as it relates to COVID expenditures that are, that are, would, over and above what you may have already received in revenues? And I, because I think at some, wasn't there at some point in time that we did fund something through a portion of 2024 with ARPA funds related to public health? No?
Oh, we, we did have our diversity, equity and inclusion person that we had hired, you know, specifically to reach out to those hard-to-reach areas in the community for COVID.
Okay. So did that go?
We didn't. Kathy, Kathy and their department received a grant for it, so we didn't spend those dollars.
I, I guess, I guess the reason that I want to try to get a handle on, on what your anticipated costs for COVID are for 2024, it seems to me that, and again, I'm going based on my, my memory, but it, it seems to me that we still had in reserved ARPA funds for public health, $250,000 that we did, we didn't, because we, I know we dropped it down to help pay for the facility, but I think there was still 250.
Well, there's two, yeah, there's 250 and then as part of the, the hiring of, of the opioid person.
That came out of that?
The board approved 18 months of use of that, those funds.
So, so, but there still is some?
Yes.
ARPA money?
Yeah, so yeah, a year and a half of the salary minus, yeah, minus 250. So probably about half of that is.
I, I guess what I'm just, you know, I'm trying to find ways to lower this levy.
Sure.
And, and, you know, so as, you know, and again, the ARPA, the ARPA funds, you know, we had, at one time, we started off with a million dollars that we reserved for public health. And that number was brought down to help build our substance facility, substance facility. And then we went down to 250 and then we figured that the, you know, offsetting the opioid thing was a potential benefit of that. But ultimately, it seems to me that, you know, any additional costs in your 2024 budget for COVID, I think would be a valid deal to bring before the ARPA committee for the remaining dollars that you have set aside in reserves to cover that.
If I may, can I?
Yeah.
So in COVID in here, our COVID funding goes through 2024. The only thing that has changed in that funding for 2024 is the fact that we cannot use our funding for the vaccine. So all of the supplies and staff that we have used COVID, our COVID funding for continues through 2024.
Yeah. So I noticed that.
Can I look at this, or to answer your question, the only thing in here would be our vaccine.
The vaccine.
At this point, we really don't know what that cost is going to be for us. It's a guesstimate in here. It's very, you know, and, and it also comes down to what the demand is going to be for the county to have those clinics that we have in the past. So does that answer your question?
It does. And I, and I see under COVID-19, you have expenditures of 190, 194,000 revenues that offset that.
Right.
But I'm, you know, what made me think about is the additional costs related to the immunizations. And I didn't know if there was anything else, but I think you've answered that piece of it. So I, so now we're probably talking about $1,500 that you've got planned for increased costs for immunization.
Exactly. It's pretty minimal right now. When you're going to see the shift is in 2025 because that 194 isn't there anymore and those expenses go into those clinics and what we have going forward.
Thank you.
Can I get, sorry, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, you have the new request then for a public health nurse, the WIC dietitian at a .8. So those are the two additional new requests for the 2024 budget.
Okay. Any further discussion? Well, with that, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'm sure Steve and Laurie will take this under advisement. Come back with a good solution. Kent, do you have any to offer?
Just about over if there's any additional questions with the demolition.
Oh, okay. I guess I was just concerned, you know, that 11,000, I don't know how often you go out to inspect. That was my question. I mean, 11,000, I don't know if we go out there doing inspection once a year. It seems like a big piece of money, you know?
Yeah, actually, the inspection piece for that is the demolition sites themselves, where we issue a demolition permit for each structure that's going to come down. So it's not inspecting the demolition landfill per se, it's the buildings that are going to be going there. So privately-run comp stock construction runs the landfill and they have a portion of their fees that will come to us.
Okay.
And we, in return, help them by making sure the wrong materials aren't coming out to their landfill.
Very good. I misinterpreted that a little bit. Sorry. Thank you for your explanation. Lucky Kathy's got that backup there. Thank you. Looks like we need a short break here, I guess. Get us back on. Thank you. With that, we'll go into committee reports. We'll start with Dave today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I remotely attended the first of the emergency communication networks 403 technical working group revising the legislation that controls emergency communications for the state. Our current chapter, the controls at 403, was written 11 years ago. A number of things have changed since that legislation was completed. And over the last three years, we've tried to get updates for this section through and it's not made it. Lobbyists with the landline companies that provide services and are part of this have been pretty effective at shutting it down. It's not made it for a vote. We are working with a number of people from those private entities and we're trying to get this put together and get them on board. We'll be meeting twice a month through October. And we got right to work and made about halfway through the definitions section of the statute. It's going to be kind of a slog. It has been updated in the proposed legislation and so it's not a huge task to get through it. But I think giving everybody a chance to discuss their concerns is going to be vital to getting this through. So it's going to be a slog, but we'll continue to work on it. On Thursday, the 10th, I tended to be on the Yellow Ribbon Meeting with Commissioner Gross. One of the things that struck me as worth mentioning here is the veteran research, or resource outreach director who works at MSUM, David Stockdill, talked about a program they've got basically through the Community College of the Air Force. It allows 15 credits to be accepted at our local universities for people seeking a degree, veterans who are seeking a degree. One of the things we're looking at is working with the criminal justice program. And given the, the real difficulty that our sheriff's department, local police departments are having getting people recruited and hired, this could be a good source for them to get potential officers. We did, I did discuss with David about the additional cost that has to be absorbed by the veteran to get the skill school after they complete their degree. That's not covered in this program. And I did tell him there's funding available with some of the agencies and they, he might want to make touch with, or get in touch with them. So I hope he follows up on that. Also Kurt Cannon, our veteran service officer here at Clay County, discussed, they've finally gotten the DMV legislation through for veterans who are full benefit 100% disability. Doesn't quite have the details yet. They're working on refining it, but it's going to be a real cost savings for those veterans who are 100% disabled. And that will be worked out by the DMV as they get things up and running on that. Later that day, I attended the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority meeting. We went over the facility site design update with Brian Bergstrom remotely, just looking at some of the, or basically the plan for the new dispatch center. There's still room for a little bit of maybe shaving off some additional feet, square footage on this, which I think you, maybe Commissioner Camore remembers, 400 a square foot, I think is.
Yeah, I have that in my notes here. It's 400 per square foot.
Yeah. So there's, if we can cut some, some of the square footage out, that, that'd be great. We also had Eric Johnson and Fargo Fire Chief Dirksen present a discussion on the ground lease. We will be building this on a property that's owned by City of Fargo out near the public safety training facility. There's a lot of positives on that. They gave basically a framework, Eric Johnson did, of the agreement that he's, he's presented to the city and he's worked out with Fire Chief Dirksen. We had a pretty good discussion about some, some things, mostly for Cass County's consideration on this. So it's going back, not quite to the drawing board, but Eric's going to make some revisions and it's going to have to get through the Fargo City Commission. But it's moving forward well and I think we're going to get a, a very desirable outcome on this. But again, that's something that's to be determined. And that completes my report.
Last Wednesday, on the 9th, I attended along with Commissioner Gross, went over to the drug court and they were in session there. I was able to stay a couple hours there and, and watch, what the judge and how she was working with the people going through that program. I found it very enlightening and the group as a whole, I think, is doing very well. A lot of people there with a year or longer of sobriety and keeping in touch and following their program along with their probation officer. There was one graduation. I wasn't able to stay that long. I'll let Commissioner Gross speak to that. Later that day, I had with Clay County Collaborative on the Governance Board, we had a special meeting. Last time this group met was back in May when we hired a new collaborative coordinator. Unfortunately, the, the person hired for that took another position just shortly after she started this one. And so we needed quickly to get together, to get things in motion to refill that position for coordinator. We did, one good thing is Carol Sturned, who had been the coordinator for years and years, was in a part-time role with us still to help transition with the new coordinator. So we're trying to work with Carol, Carolyn at this point to continue on until we can go through another interview process and she can help with the training as to whoever comes in there. So we'll be taking this up again on our board meeting on September 7th and hopefully we'll have some recommendations or the interviews will be done. Right after that, I was at a Historical and Cultural Society Finance Meeting. We had the auditors there to give us the audit report. Everything looked very clean. There was one suggestion that we buy some updated software to help with one little tweak or to make our accounting system a little better and, but overall, it was a very good report. The next day, on the 10th, that being Thursday, Commissioner Mojo and I were part of the Clay Extension Committee's job interview for an open position for a 4H extension educator. We, we were there, interviewed the candidate. Our part of that is just to make notes and listen and then we send our comments back to Extension Service and they make the decisions. We don't have a decision that, we just have input. Then right after that, I was at the CLAS WCD monthly meeting. And just a few things of note on that meeting, other than just reports and normal business, monthly business. We had Joe Olson from the county come and present about vehicle leasing possibility, working through enterprises, the Clay County does. The SWCD is looking for another vehicle and, and normally has three vehicles that they work with year to year. So might, they're exploring that and to me, it looks pretty good. Also to mention, another thing that SWCD is involved with, with the county is our Clay County walking public access process, or project, excuse me, going on on the land on the Knockin, some Knockin, properties that Knockin had just south of the Crestwood project. And along with that, that's where the pollinator, new pollinator planning, the district has purchased a brand-new small grass drill to help with that project and use county repairing aid funds with that. I guess the other thing we have that for the first time now you're going to go into with a Buffalo Red watershed and our watershed one plan, as part of that, we have the possibility of asking for engineering funds and for techno, technical assistance in doing watershed projects and that SWCD participates in. Anyway, they were requesting $20,000 and that was granted to them last night, pretty much on that. Then. on that. Then I guess would be my Buffalo Red River Watershed Meeting that I attended last night. The Watershed Board approved, went through and approved their annual budget. One note, I guess, that changed with the law this year that was significant was administrative costs. In the past, that's been a $250,000 and now that's been raised to 5,000, uh, 500,000. Those monies can be used toward administrative and our projects. So a little increase there for them through the state. Budget will be in their minutes. It's pretty detailed. I think they have 49 active projects going, so I mean, it's pretty, pretty, a lot of things going on. New permits for just four, three joint child projects and another small project up on the Buffalo by Glendon. Two things I guess I want to bring up on projects. The Stony Creek, which we've talked about the last, for the last few months, it's a restoration project that most people would, to give you a feeling, is on I-94, a couple miles south of the Downer Exit. That area is highly flood prone. It's where the Hay Creek comes into the Stony, Stony Creek floods quite a bit of land annually. Anyway, the restoration project, a water management area was set up last month and they're up and things are going to go. So they, they put out their bids, they accepted a bid last night and work may be, start beginning on that as quick as a couple of weeks from now, maybe three weeks. The other part was discussion that I thought would be of interest for us here in Clay County was this area that we had trouble with, with the spring flooding down in Crowning Road 21, just south of Baker there, that has been problematic where the cabinet company, custom cabinets are down there and they're real flood prone. And we had asked to try to get that to be a primary, a top priority. They viewed it as that and they're actually moving along really good, continually looking at funds. There's three funding sources they're looking at right now. And so not, the discussion was last night. I think next month when it comes to, we're going to have some more information about funding, what that project looks like. It'll be about, similar to the Stony Creek, it'll be about five miles long. Whiskey Creek goes into Barnesville, if we're all familiar with that, where the little, I call it the swimming hole is. And then it drains north to County Road 2. And that will be the southernmost part of this restoration. So start there and then I'll go for about five miles and all the way into that area, right on that bad intersection where we've been having trouble and where that bridge was causing a lot of trouble. So it's an old project, they got to redo the levees, widen it out in some spots, just get it to work better because there's more money, or I'm sorry, water coming out of Barnesville than before. And so in order to make that work well, this project will go another mile to the west. So we'll get under that bridge and go further west. And of course, it continues on, a lot of work could be done all the way down the, the whole way, but that will be the first project. That's what they have the scope of the project on right now. So I'm very excited.
Wouldn't that money come from one watershed, one plan?
Part of it will be DNR funding. Other ones will be grants through Bowser. And then also there's other, other ways of earning funds. There's a company interested in buying carbon credits for water, water mitigation and soil, you know, soil benefits, so money there. But there is, I, yes, some of the money is going to be part of one watershed, one plan, but these other, it's not, they're trying to get the cost down, you know, just so other funding sources. Back to the other one, Stony Creek, that turned out to be about 1.9 million. So, you know, they got a very good bid on that and we'll see where this one shapes up. Okay? That's the end of my report.
Eddie.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the interviews for the 4H Program Coordinator at Extension. And then Thursday, had a meeting with Lakes and Prairies Community Action, part of their policy reviews, updating several policies to deal with new legislation that had gone into effect August 1st, but also addressing their immunization policy to make it as current as possible. And then Friday, I attended the Moorhead Clay County Joint Powers Authority. We had a large number of appraisal reports that needed to be approved to keep the negotiations with landowners going smoothly. That was a special meeting. We don't typically meet on that day, but wanted to get it done to work with the residents. And then yesterday, attended the DMV Planning Committee Meeting, making sure that we are adding in our input to the design process as we move forward toward, with our new construction group to bidding. So just small items of adjustment, but making sure that that's done before we go out for bid. And then the only other item that I had is today, the Senate Investment Committee is touring a number of projects. At 3 o'clock today, they're meeting at the Watershed Office in Barnesville to discuss the South Branch Project and the seeking out of future dollars for construction. That concludes my report.
Come on.
Thank you. Tuesday, August 8th, we had our Highway Tracking Committee Meeting. Discussed, apparently now the Hutter Colony has purchased their own blade that's going to help maintain that 70th Avenue for a while. I think they worked out a deal with, with the township in that regard, so we'll see how that goes. We had some more discussion regarding the Diversion Authority MOU and reimbursement agreement. That still is in the process of being finalized. We had some more discussion about the Casai 11 and 26 intersection there, the four-way stop that was requested and the warrants just don't meet that purpose. As a matter of fact, there's some indications that, that could actually increase traffic problems, accidents as opposed to helping in this, in that particular instance. We discussed the Casai 12 and 52 intersection thing that we talked about today with the potential for the application for the $400,000 grant. Construction update, there were two township and two county culverts completed. The work on Casai 18 started on, on August 3rd and the Casai 26 project is slated to start on August 30th. And that's, and then we also went over some other LRIP grant opportunities forward. And on August 9th, Wednesday, we had the Dispatch Budget Committee Meeting. And basically we went, we just received an update on the 2023 year-to-date budget. Now all seems to be falling in line with, with what was anticipated. And then there is going to be a wage, wage study being done in November of this year for those employees of the Dispatch Center. Following day, we had the full Dispatch Board of Authority Meeting. Commissioner Evernery gave a good report on that and I really don't have anything more to add to that one. That day, I also attended the Lakes Country Service Cooperative Meeting in Fergus Falls. Basically everything, you went through typical deals. I know the board elections are going to be up, my position will be up at the end of this year. So I, and I expressed interest in continuing that. So I think there will be a document that comes out that this board would, you know, basically give approval to my being on the ballot for, for that position. I think that comes out in September. I think they, I think Jeremy will go through Steve on that. And then the other, you know, the other thing that was significant and important was we, you know, as we know, we have a good county administrator here. Lakes Country Service Cooperative also has a very good executive director for that program and he's recognized and well-known and respected throughout the state. And so we were, we did offer a three-year contract renewal with Jeremy Kovach, so, and so that's, that's done. And so we've locked him in for the next three years, which is good for that organization. He really, he really is on top of things there and does a great job, just like our county administrator does here. And on the, on the 11th, we had our Moorhead Clay County Special, Moorhead Clay County Joint Powers Meeting. Commissioner Mojo talked about that and, and we did go through, and I think we've established the last of the appraisals in regards to the Southeast Four, which is the main tieback levy that, on the Minnesota side. So I think all of the, most of the appraisals are done now for the Minnesota side. Now it just gets into dealing with the landowners and, and coming up with hopefully good results August 9th, I also attended the Clay County, Special Clay County Collaborative Meeting on behalf of Lakes Country Service Cooperative. And Commissioner Krabmanoff explained that, that meeting very well and I don't need to go into any more details there, other than I'm hopeful that Carolyn will step in for the vacancy that we have, otherwise it'll be a, there'll be a little concern there. And then yesterday, we had our, our meeting with the motor vehicle meeting number six of the design and went through a lot of really details. But I, I did want to bring up something that came up after the meeting, just to be on the radar here and, and so we, we got some communication from our contractor that we've, are working with now with Gert's Construction. And he mentioned that there's, there's some potential to do some early work and that could be really significant, significant and potentially really help our timeline this fall. And there's about $100,000 of site work that he's, he would like to see us get approved earlier than the schedule that we have so far. And so I know we're working, you know, Commissioner Mojo and I, we've asked Steve to work with, with Gert's Construction and with Klein-McCarthy to see how that potentially could work. But I think it's important for the board to know that, that something might be coming up that would allow us, or that, that we might want to see if we can pre-approve that site work. Because, because ultimately by doing that, it could save us an awful lot of money moving forward. Because we're not scheduled to, we're not scheduled to open those bids until, or approve the bids until October 10th. So, but so if we can get something done much sooner that in regards to that, just that defined area of that site work, we could really see everything else speed up and be able to get all that groundwork done for sure before freeze up. So it's, I just, we kind of want, just wanted that on your radar for now. Whatever we do decide is still going to be something that this board is going to have to decide, but we're trying to, obviously we need to keep through, keep this thing legally and through the proper timeframes involved. I brought up, could we, could we remove that outside of that con, outside of that thing and put it to Mike Love, for example, with, with the engineering to, and do a separate bid on that, that maybe might not need that three-week time period. So anyway, that's, I don't know, Commissioner Mojo, if you want to add to that, but that's something I think that would be really beneficial to the project.
Yeah, I agree. I think history, if we look back a little bit on what the costs in the winter ran with our resource recovery facility, making sure we can expedite this process as, as much as possible to get some fall work done. Certainly not trying to undermine anybody, but just also trying to help maybe spread out the work so that we can reach, reach an agreement sooner to get that done. I think it's worth, worth having the conversation to just see if that's an option. And, and two, the site, the site work has to happen no matter what happens out there. So for instance, if we don't get favorable bids on a facility and it doesn't financially look feasible, that's one thing, but we still are in possession of that land and need to do that, that site work, no matter what happens on that land.
But anyway, I, that hopefully something is going to, something, a plan of some sort can develop that will allow that. I know we had, we had originally asked Klein-McCarthy or, or, and Construction, excuse me, Gert's Construction had requested some of those abilities earlier. They have contractors who've been saying they're willing to start on it now. That means there's work available and there's interested contractors and so, more to come. But I, I just felt it was important that you know that we might want to look at that. So that concludes my report.
Okay. My report's Tuesday after our meetings, we had Highway Tracking, which Commissioner Campbell has already covered, other than, just to say that local road improvement plan, I mean, covered that somewhat, but we can get about a $1.5 million grant or whatever to improve some roads. So we're looking, I think, Casai 11 from Saban, going through Saban from 336 to Saban, is one of the projects that we're looking at there to cover that, get that road redone. Tuesday night, I went to, Justin and I went to Glendon Township Meeting and discussed some, a couple of bridge projects that they got going on down there and just discussed a lot of other road programs, working in Glendon Township, excuse me. Wednesday morning, went to Wild Rise Watershed District. Bob Seid gave a good report on the Buffalo Water, Red River Watershed Management Board. You're interested in looking over that report, I've got it here. In good shape, so we give a good, good report of them. Lot of discussion on their permit, mostly on farmers trying to put water on another farmer, so a lot of discussions and several, several permits that were applied for there. So that is just a routine business, so discussion there. Let's see, Wednesday afternoon, I went to Drug Court, as Commissioner Krabman already said that, I think there's around 15, 16 people there. I was just amazed at the, whatever, all those people are doing there, you know? And also, some of the ones are struggling a little bit, I think, trying to get through that program. But it's just for every person, we can get through that program is really a big savings and looks like, I mean, that doesn't look like, we had one that graduated there on, on last Wednesday and it's just, there's a good story to hear what they have to go through. I mean, it's almost a two-year program to get their, attending meetings and going through their, you know, but, I mean, it's better than going to jail, I guess, for some of those people. I shouldn't say, I think it's better, it is better than going to jail, you know? Hopefully that all those people will make it there. Sometimes, just looking over the crowd, sometimes you get some doubts, but they're doing a good job with those people and they're doing their meetings and hopefully we get a lot of good results from that Drug Court. Thursday morning, beyond the Yellow River, which Commissioner Evernery recovered, covered already. Let's see, Saturday, attended Glendon Parade, which is not much of anything there. I mean, I didn't see, the parade isn't much, we said, there's a- I mean, I didn't see, the parade isn't much, it was a, there was a big response there for, I think it's one of the bigger ones, Glendon has had there yet, and it's just, there's a good turnout there for that Glendon Parade. Also Friday, oh, excuse me, I forgot Friday, we had a Shack meeting, not a Shack, there's a Shack meeting there, a couple of representatives from the Shack Committee down in St. Paul came up to just to discuss, tell us what the Shack Committee is trying to do, what's all involved in the, and so Kathy and Roy and Carmen were all in there. We were discussing what we do here, I mean, how it all involves the county. Monday night, last night, I guess, went to Goose Prairie Township, discussed, just went over what the county is doing and stuff like that. Then from there, I went to Hitterdole City. There again, I did the same thing there, discussed the projects, talked about the West Central Water District coming through. Didn't look like Goose Prairie or the city of Hitterdole. Either one was interested at this time and they feel they got good water supply and it didn't look like there was any hole in that western part of the county. Those were my meetings.
Last Tuesday, I also participated in Highway Tracking that has been covered. We did talk about, Justin has, had already previously addressed the five-year plan for 2023, but he's continuing to make those adjustments based on the additional costs that, he'll have that out later this fall, earlier this fall. And also just wanted to recognize the work that Justin, Justin does in looking for the grant opportunities. I know he's certainly well aware, but not only just on the state level, but the federal level. He's constantly looking at different ways to complete additional projects that are outside of the scope of our plan, so I appreciate that, that work. On the 8th, I also talked with Kathy McKay in regards to some open, open positions within her department. On the 9th, we had county management. We talked about the county website update that's going to be happening this fall. We talked about our county fleet policy, which I believe is going to be before this board next week. We talked to 2024 budget, human resource updates. We now know open enrollment this year is going to be October 18th to November 3rd for our employees and it is going to be, we hoped to have it all electronic last year and this year, it appears it will be electronic and so that'll be a little bit of a change for, for our employees and hopefully easier transition for our HR department. On the 9th, also had a department head evaluation. That afternoon, we, we had the, what we hope to, hope is the final fleet policy committee meeting, as I mentioned, will probably be before this board next week. I had public health in regards to the budget that you, budget presentation you had this morning. On the 10th, I met with Commissioner Kravmanoff and a series of county issues. Also attended virtually the Red River Regional Dispatch Authority Board, Board of Authority Meeting that's been covered. That afternoon, I met with James O'Donnell, just received some update on legislation and Department of Corrections relationship that he has in regards to disciplinary room time and some of the changes that they're looking both on the state and the federal level. And again, with this board's actions, allowed him to be part of, part of that, not only local but national discussion earlier this summer in Georgetown. So I appreciate all, James' great work there. On the 10th afternoon, I spoke with a concerned citizen in regards to an issue that I kind of brought up earlier, into court situation that she's dealing with. As I mentioned, I'm not sure if that will be coming forward, but tried to help her out through our discussion and leading her to talk to the county auditor, or excuse me, county attorney. On the 11th, participated in the MCC JPA Special Meeting, that's been addressed. I had a pre-budget meeting on the 14th with the Juvenile Center. I also then had a department head evaluation and participated yesterday afternoon in the DMV Owners Meeting. That has been well, well addressed and also that afternoon continued on doing budget discussions with Lori Johnson. And again, just my final thing, just a reminder that tomorrow, there is a Northwest Senate Bonding Tour in Hellstead. They're going to be addressing our West Central Water District, a regional water district program. And so I know that we have some, you guys have busy schedules, but just wanted to throw that out there if there's anyone that is interested, that's still a possibility. That concludes my report.
And for our finale. Very good. Okay. We're adjourned.